Good evening. Good evening. My name is Barbara Nosewelly, Mayor, and I'm going to call this City Council meeting. We will start with a roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Wassmans. Counselor Buell.
Here.
And Mayor Prochese. And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present. Thank you. Do we have a translator online?
Yes, Mayor, we have Sam Guzman.
Welcome, Sam.
Hi, yes, thank you. Thank you. Can I give the introduction, the instructions?
Oh, yes, please.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you, sorry about that. Hello, everyone, my name is Sam Guzman, and I'm here with the CLC and the organizers of this meeting have made a commitment to language justice. Now, what that means is we want to create a space where everyone can participate in the language that they feel more comfortable in. So we will use the simultaneous interpretation feature in Zoom to create this space. When I finish saying this same statement in Spanish, the producers will turn on the interpretation feature and you will see a globe icon at the bottom of your screen that says interpretation. Go ahead and click on that icon and choose your preferred language, in this case either English or Spanish. Okay? Hola a todos, mi nombre es Samuel Guzman, y estoy aquí con la CLC. Estamos aquí para crear un espacio donde podemos practicar la justicia del lenguaje, donde todos pueden participar en el idioma que se sientan más cómodos. Usaremos la función de la interpretación simultánea de Zoom. Cuando termine de decir esto en español, activaremos la interpretación y verá un icono de globo en su pantalla que dice interpretación. Selecciones icono y elija su idioma preferido, en este caso inglés o español. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am going to start as I always do, City Council, with a land acknowledgement. It is my statement. It is not a view of circumstances of council or anything, but I have put it to them, but it is my statement of appreciation or respect. Read the statement. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community morals. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of Uchu, De, Pueblo, Popi, Sinon, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewed in this land. I recognize that indigenous people were forcibly removed from their ancestral land government. It is important to me to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this place. Now, we'll move to the agenda. The first issue is identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest. None? Great. If any, I wanted to point out that there are sign up sheets. If anyone here is hoping to speak during public comment, please do sign up. And then those in virtually will take anyone in the audience to speak first, and then we'll go to virtual. So I'd also like to acknowledge that Counselor Wassmans has arrived. He would be present. Okay, next we're going to have is a proclamation. Joanne McCoy will be coming up to. Who will be coming up to accept the proclamation? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Very important. This is the local chancellor. She will be responding.
All right, let me pull this together. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent documents and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patria celebration which we commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Nosewelly, Mayor of the City of Durango, Colorado, do proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, to this guardian of our liberties, and remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you. May I also add that when we were sworn in as counselors, we pledged to uphold the Constitution. And when I was sworn in, I brought, as Counselor Anna's me, I brought the Constitution in my hand and held on to it while I was being sworn in. So thank you all for doing this. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Very important. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm sorry. Very important that we recognize the Constitution. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And the ability to honor it this week. Thank you. Okay. Public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or a public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the DOTS. Citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. As I mentioned, we will call and vote by be present, and then we will go to virtual. There will be a clock where you'll have three minutes to speak. And at about 30 seconds, I'll raise my hand and try to encourage you to wind down. And if necessary, I will have to interrupt you, but I don't like to do that if I can help it. So let's see if we have. Wonderful. First person, Buck Skilman.
Thank you, Mayor Noseworthy. Counselors, I'm going to read so from my prepared remarks rather than Ed Lib. Well, rains of this summer have provided our area with much needed moisture and are both welcome and celebrated. The problem of sediment loading in Lightner Creek and subsequently the Animus River has once again fouled our beautiful river from the confluence of Lightner Creek and the Animus just downstream of the Highway 160 Bridge all the way to the New Mexico Line. The impacts of this sediment loading includes making the gold medal fishery on the Animus unfishable, providing a less than enjoyable boating experience through Smelter Rapids and on down to Dalabeda, providing sediment loaded water to the ALP intake, impacting private property enjoyment downriver of Durango and impacting the Southern Ute tribal waters. Also, there is an unquantifiable impact to the Animus fishery itself, the aquatic insects the fish feed on and the fish themselves. Recreation on the Animus River is a big draw for our local tourism, and taking half the public water out of pleasurable use has to have an impact on how Durango is perceived by the public. In short, this situation is a black eye for Durango and by extension, La Plata County. The sediment loading in Lightner Creek predominantly comes from Perrin's Canyon. When there is heavy rains on Perrin's Peak, the highly erosive Mankas Shale in Perrin's Canyon is mobilized by the rains and goes right into Lightner Creek. The bottom line is the problem starts with Mankas Shale mobilized by the rains on county land, Up County Road 206, and flows on the city land, thus becoming a stormwater control issue for the city. Modifications were recently made to create a tree settling basin, which is a help with the moderate flows. However, heavy rains can overwhelm the settling basin and overwash the adjacent roads. Further efforts need to be made to understand and develop a solution to the heavy sediment load coming down Perrin's Canyon. I understand from chatting with one of your public works engineers that a complete redo or look at the stormwater control, the cities that are going, I just please, City Counselors, we need to fix this. Thank you very much. Appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you. I also wanted to add before I call the next person that all written comments received by the city clerk today by noon have been delivered to council, and they'll be summarized in our meeting minutes. And I make a point to read those written comments before we go into meetings. Thank you. The next person is, please forgive me if I mispronounced your name, I keep forgetting you're writing, oh, it's Evan Schertz, sorry.
There's no way I can show you some pictures, is there? Is it too late for that?
Usually they're supposed to. But Evan, please submit them afterward and we can.
All right, my name's Evan Schertz. I'm the owner of Maria's Bookshop downtown, and I understand that all that's around the agenda a little bit later on, and I hope I can give you some perspective as one of the few retail bump out owners downtown. I'm proud that for three years running the space in front of Maria's Bookshop and Tequila's has provided pedestrians downtown with a respite from the concrete and steel jungle that is downtown Durango. 700 square foot privately funded public green space is more or less the only public non-commercial space on the map from Fifth Street up to Buckley Park. The Parklet is what we've named it, and it's home to more than 50 species of shrubs, trees, veggies, and flowers. The summer alone, we've hosted more than 40 local authors for book signings on the sidewalk. We've had art shows, impromptu dances, putt putt golf, and piano concerts, all in the space formerly occupied by just three cars. Now, all that's great, but I can also share some concrete insights from watching this public space. Sort of been an experiment laid out in front of my store for the last three years. My key takeaway is this. When you provide people with a space downtown to slow down and relax, they do it, and that's not a surprise, but what that means is that they spend more time downtown shopping. They stop to rest in the shade, maybe read a book, eat some ice cream, and then they go buy some more stuff, they go to another restaurant, whatever it is. Parklet has undoubtedly increased revenues for Maria's Bookshop, but I also believe it has increased revenues for our entire side of the block at the very least. And the people who enjoy our bump outs aren't just tourists, they're also locals who are looking for something new downtown and a new experience that isn't necessarily a commercial experience. So as you're considering the future of bump outs downtown and the longer term future of downtown Durango's culture and design, I hope you'll take note of the immense immeasurable benefits that this experimental public green space downtown has provided. Bump outs have finally given us the opportunity to have a real conversation about the identity and the culture that we want our downtown to have. And your decision to continue to develop the bump out program is an essential step in carrying our community's momentum forward towards finally focusing our downtown infrastructure on pedestrians instead of cars. Thanks.
Thank you, Evan. I did want to offer that if anyone came in late and they would like to sign up to speak, we'll still take names. The next person is Roger Z. Roger Z. Roger Zell, three writers. Why didn't do that well to give you justice?
It's not the worst. So thank you, Mayor, Council, thank you very much. I'm here tonight.
As CEO of Monstries.
And I'm coming to express my strong support for the continuation of Maria's bump out program, both for private and as Mr. Schertz just attested public use as well. Our company was founded and is headquartered here in Durango, has been manufacturing bump outs since the beginning of the pandemic. Our bump outs are modular and steel fabricated, which allows for rapid toolless install, long term durability, and safety that's unmatched in the industry. We make 100% of our products right here in Durango. We're up to about 10 employees right now, and we work almost exclusively with vendors in this region. All this helps to create and provide year round full time job opportunities here in the four corners. And we also partner with local colleges for internships, new hires, and research demonstrating the auto safety of our products. We sell our bump outs nationwide in multiple states and in communities as small as Antonito, Colorado, as large as Dallas, Texas. We've been recognized for the quality of work and innovation of our company as a finalist in Colorado Companies to Watch, as a recipient of a $250,000 Advanced Industries grant from the Colorado Office of Economic Development, and most recently as a winner of the Greater Colorado Pitch Series for investments into rural businesses. Our largest client to date, Arvada, Colorado, was recognized as having the best outdoor patios in the Denver metro area. It matters to us, the town we call home, allows for the use of the products we create. It's not just optics. Many of our most important features occurred because we could collaborate, test, and refine our product right here in our backyard. If we lose this ability, it's going to hinder our growth, it's going to hinder our innovation, and it's going to put us in a backseat against our competitors nationwide. And although we agree with the nearly 80% of residents in your recent survey that said that they want to see outdoor property continue, we also support a more robust bump out program, and we can help you build that program. The reason is we've talked to hundreds of towns around this country, as well as design consultants, landscape architects, and more, and we can provide networking for you and expertise to help build out a good long term bump out program here in Durango. Three things that we'd recommend, just from a starting perspective, though, is first, guarantee the program for no less than three years. Companies are not going to make investments into a high quality bump out if they can't get an ROI on their purchase. Secondly, fees are. It was the use of public space during the pandemic for free made sense, but it doesn't anymore. We've talked to a number of parking management consulting companies and can refer you to help create an appropriate fee structure for bump outs going forward. Finally, third, is design standards that address both aesthetics and public health and safety. A lot of sales focus on aesthetics, but the fact is things like auto safety, cleanliness, ADA compliance, stormwater drainage, and things like that are just as important, if not more so. So in closing, Mod Street supports a long term bump out program here in Durango with appropriate rules to successfully manage the aesthetics and global fear for the city. This will allow businesses to make better investments that improve the quality and attractiveness of these products and enhance the vibrancy and quality of life in downtown and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Okay. Do we have anyone who's raised their hand virtually?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jules Harris, who would like to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Great. Hi, my name is Jules Harris, and I live within the city limits. I would like to speak to the way we measure and analyze any project that the city takes on, whether that be a pickleball court or a parking lot, bike path, any project that has environmental impact. For the past year, I've been sitting in on a lot of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings and a lot of city council meetings. And although I believe we are all nature loving folks, I haven't heard environmental impact being at the center of the analysis for projects. It seems to be kind of an afterthought once complaints have been made, such as tree removal in people's neighborhoods. What I currently hear in most of the discussions are concerns around accessibility, user groups, cost, safety, parking, things like that. At the last City Council meeting regarding the location of the pickleball courts, it was agreed upon that reducing green space for parking is a quote concern, and I think it needs to go beyond being just a concern. I believe their preliminary analysis of any project needs to cover the environmental impact first. For example, collecting data on impact concerning loss of green space over hard space, tree removal, what kind of carbon capture loss for each tree, habitat loss, who's living in those trees and bushes, percentage of heat increase with a hardscape rather than a grass or soft scape. And on the other side of that, water use, is it advantageous to take out green grass and put in pickleball courts because it's water wise? And does that balance with the increase of heat that it creates? And these are questions I don't have answers to. These are the kinds of things I believe we really need to be paying attention to in this time of warming temperatures and drought and habitat loss. So I would love to see a protocol that starts with this at the beginning of every project, before cost, before user group, before accessibility or connectivity. And as a city, I just think we need to be considering our environmental impact and doing the least amount of harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Jules. Do you have anyone else who's raising their hand virtually?
We do not appear to have anyone else who would like to speak.
Thank you. We will then move from public participation to presentations. The city operational update.
Yes, Mayor, if we could, maybe we'll move the 7.1.3 at first, the bump out programs as we have, I think, citizens here who are interested in that presentation, not to say that the city parkland structure is not number one on the list, but maybe for the, if the council is okay with moving that first, we can start with that.
I think it's very thoughtful of you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will have Tommy Crosby with our community development team give a presentation of the bump out program updates. And the purpose for this presentation was just to talk a little bit about how we did this year with the bump out program, have some discussion or questions if the council has any, and provide any direction. Let's have to begin looking at any possible changes to our program.
Okay. Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Coordinator in the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight to provide you an update on the city's bump out program. So I want to start off with a little bit of context, a little bit of program background. The bump out and parklet program actually dates back to 2017. That was the first time when staff started to research feasibility of what bump outs might look like here in Durango. That led to the winter of 2019, when there was the first bump out demonstration during the middle of the night. And then when COVID hit in early 2020, the city sprang to action, launching its first formal bump out program under the COVID emergency order. Spring 2021, that led us to the second year of the bump out program, and that was the first year that there was any sort of version of design guidelines paired with that bump out program. Between the second and third years, the winter of '22, our Community Development Department was able to decouple our bump out program from that emergency COVID order, so it just exists as a permitted and licensed program currently under our Community Development Department. And that led us to the spring of 2022, where the bump out program has entered its third year with enhanced safety, design guidelines, things like the concrete planters, sending our bump outs back from the fall line for the benefit of our trolley drivers, all new developments that we've seen in the third year of the program. I want to take a moment to show you some of the other locations around Colorado that have similar parklet or bump out programs. Please note that this is not an exhaustive list. There are many other towns in the state that have bump out parklet programs. I'll name here a few of the commonalities that we found during our research of other programs in all the states. One, these programs do tend to be seasonal. There are a couple towns in Colorado that do have them year round, but that mid, mid spring to mid fall time range that we currently use here in Durango is very similar to a lot of the other towns around Colorado. Another commonality that we found is we're not alone in figuring out next steps when it comes to bump outs. A lot of cities and towns around Colorado are undergoing the same process, and others have already taken a step forward with their program to adopt in the form of either a three to five year pilot, or some have even brought them on as a permanent program within their city. The last commonality that we noticed was most towns and cities did have some sort of fee structure in place. Two of the ways that was modeled, if the town had paid parking that these bump outs or parklets were occupying, they tended to charge based on that lost meter revenue. Other towns that do not have paid parking program in the city, they tended to charge by per square foot. So just a few notes I wanted to share with you regarding similar programs around Colorado. The Business Improvement District has been a great partner from the very start of this program, communicating to businesses, the best place to roll out this program. What they recently did last month is they surveyed over 300 businesses, about 140 responses, more or less split right down the middle if businesses would like to see this program continue, or continue with changes, or discontinue. There was a slight favorability to continue and continue with changes. The survey results were then taken to the bid board of directors. The bid board sent a letter of support for further exploration of a bump out program with two conditions. One of those is that a fair fee is charged. This is used to the public right of way, and there is city staff time contributed to this, and the bid did not want that financial burden to fall on taxpayers. And then two was an enhanced design, enhanced design standards. Bid, the bid board said that if these conditions were met, they would be willing to look at a three to five year program for those businesses with a little bit of certainty moving forward. The city also sent out a survey of our own, and this survey was just to businesses that host bump outs. This year, there's 28 businesses that host bump outs, and we received 21 responses. 20 of those 21 bump out hosts said that the program should continue. They said that it positively impacted their business, and lastly, they said that it positively impacted the revenue generating at their business. 17 of those 21 bump out hosts said that they want to continue to participate if the city charged a fee for the bump out program. When we're looking at costs and value of the bump out program, I'm going to start talking a little bit about costs. The biggest cost that we incur is our loss, our annual meter revenue that we forego. The biggest cost that we incur is our loss, our annual meter revenue that we forego through the rollout of this program. This year, it was just over $44,000. An additional cost is the city staff time that's put into managing, facilitating, inspecting bump outs, placing the concrete barriers. Those are a couple of the costs, the main costs that the city incurs with our bump out program. And then when we look at the value generated from bump outs, the annual increase in sales tax generated by the addition of our bump outs averages out to just shy of $65,000 per year. And that's across all bump outs. Some of the other value, if you consider it more pedestrian-centered design, creating a more vibrant and active downtown with additional people on the streets. With those additional eyes on the streets, comes an enhanced sense of safety. And Durango being an experienced town is another element that enhances our experienced economy here in Durango. On my last slide here, I'm going to touch a little bit on design guidelines and safety. Like was alluded to a little bit earlier, these really go hand in hand. Depending on the design guidelines that this program has, it really can inherently enhance safety elements. The design guidelines, like I mentioned, this is the second year the program has actually carried design guidelines. I will be transparent, the city has been a little bit relaxed with enforcing those design guidelines during the first couple of years of COVID due to the fact that we were dealing with things like capacity restrictions when this program was first put into place. But as we move forward, we do have some new land use and development code staff that has helped enforce certain things like signage. Some of the COVID emergency orders that we've started to implement as a city, we've been able to add a little bit of additional enforcement when it comes to signage. Two of the other design guidelines that I want to emphasize in this third year of the program, we really stressed ADA accessibility in this third year. Hopefully you've noticed the addition of a handful of ramps to bump outs that previously did not. We still have, you know, some room to improve those accessibility standards and guidelines. But that was really one of the big efforts that we did enforce. The second thing that we really did enforce this year was setting our bump outs back from the fall line, straight down the street by one foot. And this came at the direction of the feedback of our trolley drivers. They said that they were having some issues with the tightening of the streets. So we really made sure that every single one of those bump outs is set back a foot. And we have not received any negative feedback from our trolley drivers this year regarding the tightening of the streets. And a few of the safety elements that I want to highlight here, these bump outs have acted as a traffic calming element. The Durango Police Department was kind enough to put out some speed boxes for a study at the beginning of the month. Over a five-day period, we saw about 30,000 cars go up and down Main with the average speed being 14 and a half miles an hour. And if you'll recall, prior to the bump out program, the posted speed on Main was 25 miles an hour. Another really important safety element is the concrete planters' requirement that every single bump out has at least one concrete planters, and we've made some efforts to beautify them with some flowers as well. And then, like I mentioned, the last being an increased distance from traffic, making sure those bump outs are set back at least one foot has added a wider berth for some of our larger vehicles traveling down Main. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that council might have regarding the city's bump out program.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? So do you have any recommendations about? Do you have any recommendations on the future of the bump out program or anything like that for us to consider?
Sure. I think that an appropriate recommendation would be looking at expanding this to a three- to five-year program as well as implementing a fee in the range of $500 to $1,000. Along with staff to have a little bit more time to look at what makes sense for the size of the bump out. But the recommendation would be moving forward with the program for three to five years, implementing a fee, and then touching on some of the subject matter I mentioned earlier with actually more enforcement around those design guidelines. We've had conversations with our land use development code enforcement staff member that will move into subsequent years of the program as forward with a much more comprehensive approach to design guideline enforcement.
So the bump out program that currently exists and the downtown vision plans that currently exist kind of conflict with each other. So are you thinking that the bump out program, if we chose to look forward to the downtown vision changes, that the bump out program would be designed to be timed to end when that occurs? Because the downtown vision program also foster outdoor seating and the things that the bump outs actually also do. So I'm kind of wondering.
Can I, are you specifically referring to downtown's next step?
Yeah.
Just want to clarify. Yeah, I think that the conceptual options that have been offered with the final kind of, the first phase of downtown's next steps, they do not include visioning of bump outs on street. The focus would really be migrating that to mirror something a little bit more, a more robust version of the city's bistro table program. So against the buildings not being between the sidewalks and the street. So yes, it would likely be aligned with the timing of that program. If the program, if the bump out program is extended for three to five years and downtown's next step momentum around that project builds for actual implementation in that same time period, we would not have bump outs in addition to modified street scape, at least as the conceptual design stand as is.
So when you talked about the bid survey, I missed, was that only for bid members that provided the 45% to continue and 47%?
I can, I'm happy to follow up with bid. I know it was right around 350 businesses. I don't know if those were all bid members or if it was maybe a wider net. I can follow up with you.
Yeah, I'd be great to know what percentage of downtown businesses it is and then is it more than just bid?
Absolutely.
So one of the things that kind of concerns me about the lost meter revenues, that comes out of transportation funded. And the $64,000 increase in sales tax goes into the general fund. So we're changing where dollars go to and we're taking it out of a enterprise fund that is challenged by having enough money to operate. So I think that's something council would have to also consider at the time. So for now, that's all my questions there. No, I was going to say thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. I, is there, I would say is supporting something to offset, that's in my notes here, like you offset the transit income of $44,000 with $65,000 in some way with council discretion, that would be something that I would.
Absolutely. I think from this conversation, the direction from council is for staff to look at some things similar to that as an important part, and we have a majority of council that directs staff to do so, we can definitely look into that and see what that would look like.
Now, when I had, when we were talking about during our downtown next steps, I had written down, and this is like no scribble, like I had no idea whether I had time, I had written like five to 10 years before anything actually like was constructed and built for downtown next steps. Is that my wrong? What did I, what, do we have any idea?
Stephanie, Sarah's shaking her head. A timeframe still is about, it's about 10 years.
Okay, great. That's what I wrote down. I just want to make sure that I was writing that down. And so if we did like a three- to five-year plan, you potentially dug down next state into downtown next steps, yes.
Yep.
How much to other towns? I mean, when I had Googled it and researched it, I actually wrote down 20 towns doing bump out programs Moab, like in our region even. How much do you know about how much they charge for their program?
The $500 to $1,000 range tended to be roughly what cities were looking at. It depended on the square, the per square foot model versus basing it off of meter, lost meter revenue. But that $500 to $1,000 range tended to be a trend that we saw throughout the state with some of the programs that we researched.
Just some comments for me. I would say, talking to business owners that have bump outs, that during COVID, not only did it like save their business, but now, and I know when people talk about now about business and the compression issues that small businesses are facing right now. And I don't get, I don't have a bump out, but I can tell you just the increase in cost and labor and materials. And, you know, the city still gets its taxes. We still see that we have, you know, and that the compression that's happening within our small businesses. And I know, talking to many people that have bump outs when I went around over the last few months, this helps. And if there's something we can do to help that issue, I am all in for it. I 100% support personally one counselor, you know, three to five years so that way they can invest into nicer bump outs and get their return on investment. I support better design standards so it's not so a free-for-all and you have just some, and more enforcement now if we're going to go forward with this. I support, you know, better ADA accessibility, a fair fee, a higher design standard, all those things. So I support going forward and, you know, bringing to us a structure for the future of bump outs. Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll just give you my quick comments. I think the cost, the lease rates that you mentioned, I don't think you should associate with sales revenue. Because the sales revenue is nothing to do with the value of property that someone is able to lease. And when you speak of the rates that you end up selling or suggesting, I think to make it fair for business owners that are next to each other and one has the opportunity for an outdoor space and another doesn't, to make it fair in the rates that are based on leased surface, maybe compared to interior lease surfaces, to make it a lot higher, but it's only a part of the year. And making sure that that revenue stream gets put back to work in that whole downtown area so that all these property owners and businesses benefit from it. And there's plenty of things we can do to beautify, special things to attract customers to both bump out visitors as well as the prospects. And the other thing, so I hope you take that into account when you go into the next level. The other thing is more and more people are talking to me about how our downtown looks like a free market or saying that it's so unfortunate that you don't see these store buildings anymore get that nice feel. And I think that is a big concern to me because that changes the character of our downtown. And if with a longer-term vision to have downtown next steps, you would have bump outs, not bump outs. You would have the outdoor seating attached to the facade of buildings. So you would have the historic feel and all that thing. With bump outs, you don't. So that's some just comment I want to make because I hear it more and more and I actually share it. Like a mishmash. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. And just one note on adjacent business owners. Currently, for a bump out to receive approval, they do have to have the sign-off signature of the adjacent business in order to move forward with the community development license approval.
Tommy, thank you. I also have a few thoughts as well. First of all, thank you for the effort on this and reaching out to the community to get their feedback. I'd also like to say that, give a shout-out to the staff when we were faced with COVID in March and their ability to almost turn on a dime to help communities. And that summer, I found myself walking around taking pictures because it was so crowded and it was very difficult. I mean, it was, people were just taking advantage of as much space as they could and I understood it, but it was difficult for pedestrians. So I appreciate the progress that's been made. I also appreciate the effort on ADA and your recognition that more could be done. I recognize that. My question on the fee is, well, two questions. First of all, did you float that number past the businesses?
Yes, we did. We had, I think, nine businesses say that their max fee would be 500. And then we had businesses list all the way up to $3,500 of a fee that they would find appropriate. That was one of the questions that we floated in our survey.
And I think it's important that the city consider this fee in conjunction with our other fees that we might, that we charge. For example, we charge a rafting fee of the rafting entities here in town. And they get use of the public river, the public good, the river, and using the put-in and take-outs. So I want to make certain that, not that they're the same, but that if, think in terms of usage and benefit and that we look at that. And I just think that that's, it's a balance. You want to provide the amenities that are required with all of that, either with parklet or in this case rafting. But you also want to cover the costs and other maintenance issues. I'm eager to hear your final, when you come back, your final recommendations. Oh, one more question on three to five years. I think that is important. I think we have to all recognize that, you know, we can make a policy, but future councils can change it. So I think that's important. So it's the intent would be a policy and be set that there is recognition for others can do things differently. So, yes. How many bump outs are there?
This year, there's 28. And the average over the last three years is 28.
Okay, that's good. So we have some bump outs that actually generate sales tax in some of them.
Correct.
And so under the current system, that, I don't know, it's just, that kind of bothers me in some way, shape or form because of the taking of public property and not generating anything back for those that don't generate sales tax revenue. And the other thing that makes me wonder is we have very savvy owners of buildings downtown. If they have increased the rental cost to their businesses in their buildings that have bump out capabilities because now they have more square footage and more capability producing revenue and if it has increased the rents from them. Because I don't know, some rents often are based on gross rentiness. So these are just things that kind of run around in my brain about how it's affected our situation. And I, I too have heard a lot about the fleet market that we have. And I think that we would have to be very, very diligent if we go forward with this in design guidelines and what things look like. And I am also concerned about not seeing the historic building facades. So I'm, I understand the benefit to the businesses downtown. And I understand that we still have some issues with hiring people to work that I don't have a position yet on the future of the bump out program.
Well, I'll make sure to take all of your comments and feedback back to our community development staff. It is a cross-departmental effort, transportation, streets, community development, police, DFPD. So there's some conversations to be had and we'll make sure to, as best we can, factor in the feedback and comments that we've received.
Can I ask one more question?
Please, go ahead.
Can you, when the next level, next turn is for feedback, could you explain more about, there's maybe three places that have patio against their facade, one in the picture being one of. As well as what lease rates would be, lease rates for interior, just a general comparison. If someone gets bumped out space, four feet by 20 feet is 80 feet. What would that lease rate was opening space compared to, just to get an idea of what numbers we're talking about?
So spots that have a bistro seating at the end of bump outs, are we asking?
Two different, two different questions. How is the patio seating on the left against facades currently managed? Because only three places have it. And maybe it's possible to do that as a temporary measure. And the other part is, any space that is being taken from the sidewalk or the street parking space as bump out space? Your fee structure, I personally would like to see included in that what would be a comparable lease interior landfill level space leased for? Just to get an idea, because if you say $500, well, I know it's extremely low space, but what is it compared to?
Sure, we can definitely look into that. And then to your first question of the patio space that you see on the left, that's actually part of the city's bistro table program. So any tables and chairs that you see against a building is currently permitted through the city's bistro table program.
Okay, interesting.
I have one other question, which is maybe for you or the city manager. In your planning for this, when do you actually need a more of a decision from council? We've just given a bit of information and we provided immediate feedback. What's your schedule for bringing that back to us for some kind of? What's your schedule for bringing that back to us for some kind of formal endorsement or not?
Do you, uh, if you want to answer? It would be great before the, the program comes to an end, uh, November 1st, it would be great to have some guidance to communicate to businesses so they can plan for 2023. If they are, you know, when they're decommissioning their bump out, if they're storing, uh, materials or if they're going to upgrade, uh, it, it would be helpful to be able to provide some guidance before, uh, the program sunset for this season.
In order for me to say I supported or I don't support it, I need a, uh, proposal from staff about what it looks like. Um, and so that doesn't mean that the council necessarily agreed to that proposal. Might shift things or change some things, but just to, just to say in the blue without a proposal, I can't, I can't give one way of view.
Yeah, and I think that that's where we're going. I think it was on intent to do so. What we were looking at is, you know, I guess kind of where Tommy was coming from the staff is here's kind of what we're looking at. Here's some of the things that we're seeking. As long as the councils, like, continue to go down this route, we're able to come back and think probably offer some options in regards to what a bump out program may look like. Councilmen can obviously give you direction if we're offered, whether that's more or less. But before we even went down this road, we wanted to have that opportunity to discuss with the council and make sure that, uh, you were okay with staff continuing down this route.
I'll, I support that. I support it.
So I support the research and coming back with the, with the program. But I don't think that's a formal conclusion that's approved or disapproved either way. But I support the development of this, so we can have a really robust conversation about does it work, does it not?
And I support moving the discussion further and look forward to the answers to the questions at post. Thank you very much.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Not a decision on this one, just pursuing it. Thank you. All right. City manager, what do we have next? Are we moving to the, um, pay, the city pay plan structure?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have Aaron's idea or Assistant City Manager to lead a presentation on our city pay plan structure. Uh, as you know, when, uh, I believe it was in 2019, uh, the day plan had been adopted then. Um, and we were just looking at it again to revise it to make sure that it met our goals. Uh, and also with the market is where it is to make sure that we were paying within market. Uh, there is not a decision made tonight about this. Uh, we were just willing to present it to you as it will come back to council, uh, during the budget approval process as we go through approval of a plan from the council. So still time to go. Just wanted to make sure that we got familiarity with it. Uh, as there's a lot of decisions that go through with the budget process as well.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To add a little bit to Jose's introduction, uh, the HR team partnered with One Digital to complete this work. And tonight we have Chris Bariantis joining us virtually to give us a short presentation on the completion of this work, including the final recommendations to be included in the proposed 2023 plan to be adopted later this year, along with the relatively small fiscal impact that is included as part of the budget process. So as we, Chris has joined us. So as we work through this presentation, if you have any questions on him or I, we'd be happy to answer those.
Is it possible to have him be personally tell this presentation?
Good evening, everyone. Um, Aaron, um, as I said, my name is Chris Bariantis. I am the managing consultant at Paradox Now One Digital. And I've been working with the city on this, um, compensation benchmark project. And today we're going to, um, go through some of the key findings and recommendations. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so let's get started with executive summary. Let me just move this over here. Okay. So to kind of summarize, Paradox benchmarked 193 positions to the market or reviewed the results with HR and each of the executive leadership team members. It was determined after the market assessment that the current salary structure is approximately 1% behind the market at the 50th percentile. Once we looked at the market, we then looked at the salary structure and its design. And what we did was we updated the salary structure to be more consistent, um, between each of the grades and removed the original grade 55. The new structure will start at a grade 60 and is 4% above the market 50th percentile. Paradox recommends adopting this approach as it'll be more consistent between each of the grades and simpler to administer and maintain. And we'll go into more detail about that. But after the 3% merit increase, the total cost to bring all employees to the minimum of the proposed salary structure is an additional $47,960 or 0.2% of payroll. So just to talk a little bit of our methodology of this study. Um, as I said, we benchmarked a total of 193 positions and we used several different, uh, survey sources. We subscribe to large, um, surveys where we're able to get very specific cuts, um, for government, in this instance for comp analysts, which is a big survey warehouse, ERI, Mercer and Towers Watson. So we looked at government data cuts on this, but we also looked at for profit, um, where appropriate. As you all know, um, you know, for example, in IT, it doesn't necess, you don't necessarily need a government background, uh, to come work for the city. And in fact, you're, um, competing with a lot of for profit or private, um, companies for the same type of labor. So that's why we looked at kind of both data sets for that. In addition to those surveys, we also looked at comparable city, county and airport data in the table below to also kind of look at the surrounding, um, peer cities to where you also compete with labor in. So once we, um, looked our sources, we then completed the benchmarking and reviewed all the matches and data with HR and finalized, uh, everything with ELT members. Coming from that, the market data shows that employees are 4.7% below the market at the 50th percentile with departments, um, that are more than 5% below the 25th percentile being the airport, the city manager and media communication engagement departments. So once we kind of have the baseline of, um, of the benchmarks, we then moved our attention to the structure design. And there are a few issues with the current structure that we wanted to address in the study. The first one being the inconsistent progressions in between each of the grades. If we look at this table down here on the right hand column where it says grade progression, you can kind of see where it's a little inconsistent, where it jumps from 10%, 5%, 8% and so forth between each of the grades. Um, in structure design, you typically want to have your grade progression pretty consistent between each of the grades, mainly because, um, you know, if you're getting promoted, for example, from a 65 to a 70, um, if it's only a 5% increase when an employee gets promoted, there's not much room within the range. And then as they get their, their merit or cost of living adjustments, um, they start to get, uh, closer to that maximum range. We wanted to provide enough room between each of the grades to where if we have movement of employees, there's going to be enough room for them to not be topped out of their range. The other thing we looked at were the inconsistent range spread. So if we look at this, um, other column, they will range spread typically. And structure design, you'll have your range spreads kind of fan out where the lower grades will have a, and more narrow, um, range. And as you go through the structure, it kind of fans out toward the large grades have a more room within that. The reason for that is, um, it takes less time in the lower grades to kind of gain mastery of the position to where we would want to see those employees where, um, applicable move within the range quicker than someone who's maybe at a 130, where that's more of a career level and they have more room to kind of grow within, um, that range because they're pretty much going to remain at a 130, um, for most of their career. So in order to make the structure more uniform, we're recommending a consistent 10% progression between each grade. In addition to be more uniform, again, this will benefit employees who receive promotions and give them more of an increase and/or room within the range. We're also recommending a consistent range spread ranging from 30% to lower grades to 55 at the larger grades. And I'll, I'll show you an example, um, of what that looks like in a little bit. But one of the main takeaways here is because the regression between grades is a constant 10% in the new structure, there are larger increases between grade midpoints or grades that currently have less than 10% progression between each grade. So what do I mean by that? If we go back one slide, you can kind of see between a grade 65 and a 70, there's only a 5% difference. When we move this to 10, the midpoint is going to obviously, um, um, take a larger leap from 5% to 10%. And, and that kind of compounds to the next one because that's also taking a larger leap from 5% to 10%. So you're seeing a little bit of a compounding effect on this, which the consequence of that is, the grades come a little misaligned towards the top end of the range. So to remedy this, uh, what Paradox recommends is starting the structure at a grade 60 and eliminating the grade 55. Probably minimum and minimal impact of moving the current grade 55 positions to a grade 60 and allows the structure to be more consistent and uniform between each grade. So when we move to the next slide, you can see what I mean here. We have the current structure on the left side and the proposed structure on the right side. You can see we're now eliminating the inconsistencies between the grade progression a little more consistent, staying at 10%. And then the range spread instead of starting at 40, going to 45 and then moving back down to 40, it's a little more consistent. It's constantly kind of moving up to where we end at a grade, uh, at, um, a grade of 55. So with this proposed movement, the structure is now, uh, 4% above the, um, the 50th percentile of the market. So we do recommend the structure as it will allow for more consistency between each grade and help future proof the structure and allowing it to go a little longer between benchmark studies. Again, since it's, it's going a little bit higher than the market, there's going to be a little more, um, wiggle room in future proofing it to where, uh, with this labor market being what it is, you're able to be a little more flexible and, um, be able to go hire the talent or retain the talent in order to, um, keep critical functions of the city running. So going through, through the study, there were a number of jobs where either because of the market assessment or internal equity that we're recommending moving, um, grades. None of these positions moved more than one grade, so there's no significant jump. But the ones that we're recommending are this applications manager, infrastructure security manager, one from a 110 to 115, airport operations and project manager, 100 to 105, our captain and operations supervisor, 99, our, um, slash operations lieutenant, 85 to 90, airport environmental technician, 80 to 85, our operations technician, 75 to 80, parking enforcement technician, 65 to 70, customer service assistant, 60 to 65, parking enforcement officer, 60 to 65, senior custodian, 60 to 65, and then the custodian and solid waste operator, one going from a 55 to 60. So once the proposed structure was finalized, we did a cost impact analysis to kind of determine what the total cost is to move to this proposed structure. And in terms of cost, um, the true cost is, um, 114,471. But when you consider there's going to be a 3% cost of living adjustment for all employees, um, that fixes a lot of the under minimum problems and actually drops the cost to 47,916 or 0.2% of payroll, which is a very minimal cost in terms of structural development. We like to say that, you know, anything under, um, 2% is pretty good. Um, when we are adjusting the structure in terms of total cost. So if it's, you know, 0.2%, that's, that's very, very minimal in our eyes. And that is the end of, um, presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Aaron, do you also like a moment in case we had questions for you? Thank you. I'll open it up. Questions from council members?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions of the consultant. I appreciate all the work that you've done. I'm interested in you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, it, it seems like this will help adjust some of the compression issues that we've experienced from other movements we've had in the pay structure previously. And so I like that the, um, it's following, it's cleaner. It'll allow us to potentially not do this other, you know, crazy pay grade study for a long time. Um, and the fact that it's less than 0.2% with a 3% COLA makes sense. So I appreciate it and I appreciate us kind of looking at specific positions and getting them to where they should be. And, um, yeah, so good work. Thank you.
Councilor Basman?
No, no comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll leave this to us. Um, so when councilor knows where the, Mayor knows where we and I were, um, on council several years ago and they did the, uh, grade study before they all changed state. One of the things that we both asked for, um, is it isn't just pay and it isn't just benefits. And I think it would be very important to know where do we sit given pay and benefits compared to other municipalities, other public and private entities? Um, because I, I think that that's incredibly important to be able to not only recognize the level of benefits that we do offer to our, our employees, but to, when, uh, people don't go work somewhere just because of pay, they also go for other, and some generations are different in their perspective on that. So I would be very interested in knowing how we fit into the bigger picture of total compensation, so pay and benefits.
Aaron, I'm not necessarily expecting any answer right now. Are you?
No, no, of course not.
I wanted to say a couple of things as well. Uh, first of all, thank you. Thank you for the analysis. Um, I was curious of the consultant, did you look at any Durango based companies? That you said that, correct? I was trying to capture it on the slide, but I went by too quickly.
Yeah, so we, um, with our large survey houses, we're able to get data cuts on actual, um, city level data. So the cuts that we use looked at Durango specifically, but, um, the, the surrounding areas, we have to use those surrounding areas just because, you know, private businesses don't necessarily share that information with us. So we kind of have to use approximations and those cities, those counties and those, um, those airports, the airport specific jobs, um, were our best shot in looking at the, uh, looking at comparable locations where you typically compete with labor.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I also appreciate the effort to address the compression problem. Um, I, when we were looking at the previous, um, pay compensation increases, that is a really strong potential that we would face compression issues and we did. So I appreciate you, uh, beginning to address that. Uh, I also had a question about the benefits. I know you're not here to discuss it. We have had a session on the benefits. I remember asking, was it gold or platinum or what? And the, you know, the consultant said we had pretty much a platinum benefit plan. So I'm curious, when will we be seeing any review or changes, or proposed changes to the benefit plan? Because I typically, uh, they go hand in hand with compensation.
They do. I can respond to a couple of those different remarks. Um, so number one, Councilor Basman, I couldn't agree with you more that our approach is from a total compensation approach and not necessarily a wage paying approach. One of the key items that, uh, the team worked on and we, we worked with our Be Well Cross Functional team on was the creation and review of a total compensation. Was the creation and review of a total compensation philosophy and statement that we now have for the city. We're working through that process of being able to communicate that out and publishing that, both for our internal managers. So we can speak to how we compensate our employees, but also our employees and our candidates of how we attract candidates to really say, hey, this is all that we offer, not just wage. And our approach is such that we attract and retain, you know, a high-performing workforce. So we do have that ready to share and we're working through a strategy on communicating that out to the organization. Um, to the benefits question, we're working through the renewal process right now. Um, I believe the actuarial value of our benefits plan uh, indicates that it's at at a gold level. Um, we've gotten the initial review or renewal. Um, in normal practice, you get an initial renewal, you go back and say, renew renegotiate parts of that renewal of the benefits plan. Um, we are receiving, uh, we've received three different options to consider for this upcoming year. That we're gonna work through in partnership with our be well cross-functional team and internal employee team to get some feedback from that group. And then we'll be um, you know, submitting this as part of the budget process with the um. The one issue with the timing of our benefit renewal is the timing of when the budget is submitted and the timing of how we can prove it. Um, so we'll have initial um, results and discussion items here at the retreat. Um, and then we'll go forward from there. The intention then is going forward is to move our renewal date to a May, so July date. So that we don't have this conflict of both the budget and the renewal process at the same time.
It's great to hear that you'll be bringing us a proposed, some options as part of the budget um, that include the the benefit package. Thank you.
Any other comments? Did I, did I understand to say that you do have that information about pay and benefits as you, as compared to other municipalities and other private enterprises and where we stand on that?
Uh, from a quantitative of all the items, no. Like for a cumulative effect, we do know uh, where our pay plan compares to market. Um, as presented with this new pay plan structure, so it's at market. And then as a gold plan, uh, we're, we are above market.
So and we're actually above market, it's paid to four percent, about fifteen percent.
Uh, technically, market range is plus or minus ten percent, so for a market. Yeah, Chris, is that an accurate statement?
No, that's, that's absolutely accurate.
Okay, so, so do most um, other municipalities and private enterprises compare yourselves to do a gold level plan? Or are they at a silver level plan or do they not offer plans? So how does that work?
Um, Chris, when we talked about incorporating the benefit value, did we end up with a final assessment or cumulative assessment? We talked about them separately, but as part of the process. So, Chris, I don't know if you can speak to that as part of our process.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't necessarily look at that benefits piece of it. Um, but I know Erin talked about um, you know, kind of looking at, you know, Durango having um. You know, higher benefits than than average and everything, which, you know, in this labor market, kind of attacking it from both sides, I don't think is a bad approach. Just with um, you know, competing with labor, again, competing with for-profit companies, things like that. I think um, you know, being where you're at is a good approach.
I'm not suggesting it's not. I'm suggesting we should know where we are, um, so that we can have watch, call, inform conversations about.
Yeah, independently, we're at market with our pay plan and then above market with our benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next on the agenda, we have the twenty twenty-two CIP progress report. Coming up, Allison and Sarah and Senior George, do you want to provide any introduction?
Uh, sure. This is just another day in the council on our CIP projects. It kind of started with a conversation uh, with transit in regards to a uh, relatively recent bid that we've done. Downtown next steps that came in higher than what we had budgeted for. And just thought it was a good idea at this point to kind of just talk with me, form a CIP team this year of some of the things we are seeing when it comes to high bids coming in that were less than or more than what we had budgeted for. As well as some of the key learnings that we have found out in regards to some of our CIP projects. Um, in plans being submitted or plans being submitted, they were only ready for construction and finding out that they're really only about sixty percent, which then entails moving projects over year to year. So we are seeing some learning opportunities that we're having internally.
Okay, so, good evening, Councilor Mayor, Allison Nader, the Public Affairs Director of the City of Durango. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview before giving specifics of what, what they've come up against here in the last couple of weeks. I do want to share with you. Excuse me again, ones, um. Some information from our procurement division. Um, that list, extensive list, it helps me be appreciative of all that procurement's doing. Um, these are the projects that have been bid this year. Uh, yellow ones are construction projects, uh, CIP projects. If they've got a little orange tab over on the left, which didn't really come out very well in the Xerox. Those are the airport projects which aren't really subject to exactly the same conditions. And then the blue were uh, more procurements of uh, items, equipment, things like that, services. So when you start going through this, you realize that I'm looking at counting up a lot of projects here with no bids. There were five, the five projects that were put out to bid with RFPs um, that received no bids. One of them was from Durango, but one of the ones that I know, I believe it was Tommy worked on extensively, the Common Threads. Actually went out to bid three times and got no bids three times. So a lot of work has been going into these that we're, we're not seeing the results we'd really hoped for this year in terms of contractors responding. Just a little further information on that, if you go through, through these projects, there are ten projects where we received one bid. That is certainly not an ideal situation for us. Um, we like to see some competition among our bidders. Obviously, they don't go into it knowing that there's going to be only one bid, but nonetheless, once they see a pattern, it doesn't, doesn't help our situation. So this has been a tough year um, for bidding projects with labor shortages. I think everybody's aware of the supply chain issues, including um, fly ash, which is a component of concrete. That has become very difficult to obtain, so we're all learning how to make new concrete this year. So there are those external factors. What we're looking at that I think will make a big difference for next year is that we do have fully staffed CIP. Jennifer has hired three uh, project managers and two inspectors. That are fully up speed and ready to go in different areas that started January one. So that was time, time spent, but it's, I think, been a, a good investment of time. We've got a really strong staff with some good experiences. Um, we've got designs ready. A lot of what, a lot of these projects, uh, we entered this year with them on the CIP. Uh, plans financially and when we start picking apart and pulling apart, going to write the RFP, discovering that. Uh, if the idea was in place or we had a shop drawing or um, the concept was put together, but. Those aren't what we did. We did a full set of engineered uh, design documents with specifications that are appropriate to make sure that. The bids can be prepared reliably. It took us more time to get these documents ready to go out to the street than we would have liked. So some of the things that in a perfect world, we could have been in March or April or been in June, for example, which didn't help us. Because the local contractors at that point, really, the dance floor was full. They were ready to go to work and on other projects that they had been earlier in the year. So we did have some issues with, with some of those projects not getting the bids. And those are, those are the ones that we will be bidding going into November, December. The pledging is already approved. We'll be um, looking to catch contractors as they wrap up. Uh, usually the batch plants close down in around Thanksgiving or so. And so at that point, contractors are looking to start bidding for the following cycle. And we'll get the twenty twenty-two projects rebid, um, November, December as possible. And then depending on how twenty twenty-three budgeting uh, goes. The twenty twenty-three projects will go out to bid January, February of twenty twenty-three. So we hope to jump ahead of the curve a little bit. I think we've got uh, a better system, we're more consistent. Jennifer Holland, our CIP manager, is going to give a full update on not just the bad news. But the good news of what really did get accomplished this year, um, in November. Uh, once the budget's kind of out of everybody's headlights and um. She'll talk through the successes and the projects that have worked out. I think we've got some real good um, results to, to show for the year. But at, at this point, um, transportation uh, took a little bit of a hit with these uh, later in projects this year. And I wanted to kind of give you a heads up that um, it wasn't just a, a situation that they were caught in. It was more the industry slash division slash process uh, situation. And wanted to take responsibility for what's appropriate and say we're doing everything. We can't, we can't perfect the labor market unfortunately, make it um, all go away. Uh, but we will do what we can to leverage our ability to get into it at an early time going forward next year. So excited and as always optimistic, um, offering an open to thousands to share some details about their projects. Are there any questions or anything that I can answer? I need this or high yields.
Tom has ordered a late fat flat screen.
Oh, he said, I feel like I'm hearing, yes.
So theoretically, we should not have this problem with anybody standing up there.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Allison, why don't we also hear her Devin and then see if we have any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Transportation, Transportation Staff, Devin King. Just wanted to give you a quick update on two projects specifically downtown's next step, which has already been brought up this evening. So that one, the proposal went out for designing and we did receive two bids, however, both of those. Budget was approved for that project, so we are taking that before man, this was today, but unfortunately, we're still in the procurement process. So we can't give any more details on it right now. Um, and just kind of as a backup, you know, we've waited to get that RFP out until we had um, the conceptual design so that that was a more informed um, process. And then also wanted to update you on the College of Aid project, which uh, went out to bid. Um, we received no bids for it. It was kind of weighed out to bid. So that project, you know, had to go through CDO appearances and all of that approval, which we got all those approvals in June. And then got the RFP out soon thereafter. So we will be taking that back out, um, advertisement for uh, mid-November. And we've already kind of started that process with CDOs to make sure we're ready at that time. Um, and as Allison said, hopefully that will be a, a good timeframe to go back out for that.
Thank you, Devin. Um, questions of either presenters? Yeah, thank you.
I'm just about there. Tom texted me, the flat screen's supposed to arrive tomorrow. Thank you. Shortly, we're happy.
Okay, we will move on to item eight, the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by single loan ship to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member requests an item being removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under agenda item nine. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Yes, items eight point one and eight point two are approval of minutes. Eight point one is from the city council's best study session on September sixth. And eight point two is for the regular meeting on September sixth. Item eight point three is acceptance of the twenty twenty-one annual comprehensive financial report and federal single audit report for the city of Durango. Item eight point four is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the investment policy. Eight point five is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an appropriation for the Colorado State by the Internet Portal Authority grant program. For fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, that will close June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And item eight point six is final reading of ordinance oh, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Vacating and abandoning an undeveloped portion of public right-of-way on Canyon Lane and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Does any councilor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove eight point three and eight point four.
Okay, so noted. Any other requests?
I would move to um, adopt the, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items eight point two and eight point four.
All second? Any discussion? It's called the Hall of Fame.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
And Mayor Nusworthy?
Yes, thank you. So item nine, we'll move to is um, the removed consent agenda items. Item eight point three, Councilor Basman, would you like to provide your rationale for removing this?
Yes, I will. The annual comprehensive financial report was provided late last Wednesday. Allowing three point five, three and a half working days councils to review, assuming we, we clear our schedules completely. And within those three and a half days, there were two other meetings to prepare for on top of that study session and this specific agenda item. It's a complex document that has taken many months for city staff and the board to complete and I've not been able to complete my review and analysis. And I'm not sure there will be many courses of concerns, but I would have, I would prefer to handle what you're doing, to do what I need to do and not rubber stamping this. As such, I make a motion to continue this item to a regular and next regular city council.
Is there any second to Councilor Basman's motion? Hearing none? Is there a new uh?
Oh, please go ahead. Um, so I think there may be a slight misunderstanding about what annual comprehensive financial reports and audit reports are about. Council's analysis of the reported looking at it and asking questions about it doesn't change the report. The report is what it is. It's a reflection of the status and the quality of the year-end information. That won't change. It is what it is. Um, we do have the opportunity, however. We do have the opportunity, however, which I will take advantage of because I've done this as my third annual comprehensive financial report process that I've been through. And I found that letting staff present it to us, letting others present it to us, and then spending the next month or so, taking my time, which is, I think, is very, very important, to analyze the report and see if there are things in it that do not reflect the way I believe the city operations and financials should be managed, or the way we've been told they've been managed, and then bring those questions back so that those things can be changed. So this report is what it is. Acceptance of it does not mean that we agree with the way operations have been handled. What it means is that we realize that it has been well audited and well documented, and it is what it is. So given that, I would move that we accept that, acceptance of the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Federal Single-Lot Audit Report for the City of Durango at item 3.
I'll second. Any discussion? I will add, as I did during the study session, for the public to be aware that there were no recommendations. What was the term unmodified? Unmodified, which is the highest ranking or the highest recommendation of what you can provide. So I do want to say, provide that information as well. Now that we have a second.
I mean, Mayor, just to make sure, Counselor Baxter, you said approved, just to make sure of like it is an acceptance of the item. It is not an approval of the item.
All right. Is there any other discussion or are we ready to go for a vote? Okay, let's go for a vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
No.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Okay, Counselor Bossmans, item number 8.4, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of the investment policy.
Thank you. This item was also discussed during the study session earlier today. And I had requested some changes and mission speakers document mostly associated with internal controls, language in that, and periodic reviews. And as such, I make a motion to continue this item to our next regular city council meeting.
Is there any second? On that note, is there any motion to, for possible action? Is there any motion to approve the investment policy? I'll make a motion to approve the investment policy. I'll second. Any discussion? Let's have that vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
No.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Now we move on to public hearings. And I believe our first hearing is item number 11.3, a public hearing to consider the Berg 357 adventure boundary adjustment. Now we'll be presented by. Sorry.
We're just wanting to make sure that we.
Did I do that right? Yes, hi.
Now, you're speaking here for the community development department. This is the Berg 356 adventure value adjustment. So this is a request to adjust the barriers between one residential and two commercial properties. The subject parcels were annexed to the city in 2002. Based on county assessor records, the residence was built in 1990.
On the Berg parcel and the commercial buildings on the other two properties are constructed in 1972, 1985, 2006.
So the parcels are located west of town on Highway 116. The ones, the three subject parcels are this large one, the triangle pieces of the Berg parcel.
And the.
The rectangular, these two square parcels are not involved in the battery adjustment that's being proposed. So zooming in on the left are the existing battery lines.
The right are the proposed. So there's this like shift on the eastern and then the southern or boundary lines. The proposed line shifting property lines reflects the strike line. Approximately 500,000 acres would be transferred to the Berg parcel, which is that triangular piece. So all property owners, all free property owners have agreed to the change. And no new developments being proposed are reviewed at this time.
This is a proposed plot. Again, the changes are not easy to see here, but. Down in the lower right-hand corner.
The code battery adjustments are processed by subdivisions.
In this case, due to the simplicity of the request, most of the subdivision criteria are not applicable. But the proposed changes comply with standards for strategic zones. There's no impact on future land use designations of the comprehensive plan. The engineering review is not yet complete. Edits, any edits are expected to be made prior to the final plot. There's minimal visibility to the strategic plan goals. It broadly applies to the objectives. It brings up a potential title issue in covering residential properties. There is a shed, the Berg shed is currently off the property, so shifting that line based on the fence. We'll put it back on there. To date, no comments have been received. Planning Commission will read this proposal on August 22nd. Unionists, we unanimously recommend an approval on that 40 votes.
So tonight's.
Our recommended motion would be to approve the Berg 356 adventure boundary adjustment of the financing conditions.
As outlined in the August 22nd Planning Commission's staff report in the minutes.
Thank you, Mallory. I will open the public hearing. I don't believe there's anyone in the audience here to speak to that, but can we, can the host let us know there is anyone virtually who has raised their hand to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have one person with their hand raised. It's Art Berg. I'll allow him to talk here.
Go ahead, Mr. Berg.
Oh, sorry. He's just coming in now.
He's one of the applicants. I meant to mention that at the start that they, I think, believe they're zooming in.
Is, I think it says that they're talking, but we're not hearing anything. Is that just me talking? Ah, Chambers, okay.
The mic is muted. Art.
Can you unmute the person?
There, we have, we have no comments. We're just here in case you folks had questions or concerns.
Thank you. All right. Since there are no comment, comments, I will close this, the hearing, and open it up to questions from council of either staff member or of the applicant.
Seeing no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the Berg 356 adventure boundary adjustment with the findings and conditions as discussed in this public hearing and outlined in the planning commission staff report.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Let's have this vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mallory.
Thanks.
And thank you to the Bergs for being available to answer questions. The next one, Dan, thank you, is a public hearing to consider the Milton preliminary plan development at 1689 Florida Road.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mayor, councilors, Dan Armatano with the Community Development Department. And this is the Milton property preliminary plan development. So I'll start with a quick summary for you all. So this is a residential plan development from Shaw LTD. There's 23 town home units proposed. You all saw the conceptual plan and the rezone last summer and approved it, I believe that was in July. It's a 2.7 acre property that will be redeveloped. There are a few homes on site currently. The design is relatively in alignment with the Mountain Trace 1 and 2 and Timber Trails projects to the north, which are also developed by Shaw. And the preliminary design is pretty consistent with the conceptual plans. There's one less unit. The setbacks are slightly modified, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Here's a context map showing the property outlined in red here. So we're at the northeastern portion of the city limits. And the property itself is bounded on the south by Florida Road and on the east by the Mets Lane right-of-way. Mets Lane is not yet constructed, but will be built out to the intersection with Florida Road prior to the construction of any units on this property. And if we look a little bit closer, you can see the, the units on site currently. And then to the north is the Mountain Trace 1 development, which is nearing built out at this point. Just to the east of that, this 250 address here is the Mountain Trace 2 Town Homes Future Development. And you can see, of course, Mets Lane is not yet built, but will be here before this project moves forward. I also want to point out here, too, you could see the slopes, sort of this, the eastern, sorry, the western half of this parcel is fairly substantially encumbered by some steep slopes. That's Tarmigan Ridge. This is kind of the eastern terminus of Tarmigan Ridge, so it kind of slopes down sort, towards the, sort of the northern central part, portion of the property here. And that's shown quite nicely in the photos as well. So this photo on the lower left is from Florida Road. This is the mobile home, which is the westernmost structure on the property right now. And here's the slopes leading up to Tarmigan Ridge. Then over here, this is from the Mets Lane right-of-way, and this is the toe of the slope. There will be a little bit of impact to that, but broadly, the developer's done a pretty good job of citing the units away from slopes to, to the extent possible. So to go into a little bit more detail on what's proposed here, so again, 23 town home units. They are mostly configured as duplexes, so 11 duplex structures. And then there is one single unit by itself. All are two-bedroom floor plans. All floor plans are more or less identical. The access is off of Mets Lane, and it will have a gated dead end at Florida Road, which the fire department can use as an emergency access. The steepest areas, the Tarmigan Ridge portion, is pretty much an almost entirely open space. There is some minimal impact. Some of his hillside development proposed as part of this. There's going to be an HOA which will maintain the common elements, including the private drive for the access to the units. Excuse me. As for public improvements, there will be sidewalks and landscape strips along both Mets and Florida Road. New utilities, of course, to service the units, stormwater basins along Florida. And then there will be a tie-in to some existing drainage infrastructure that runs through Mountain Trace to the north. So here's the site plan showing the layout as proposed. Just this here on the left is the most recent site plan I've got. It's more or less consistent with what we've been receiving. But I wanted to highlight a couple of things here. First, the proximity to the Mountain Trace Building G. So previous designs had this duplex cited very close to the property line, which had some impacts on this Mountain Trace Building G that has been addressed. So now there's a 20-foot setback to the northern property line. And then to try to keep the units away from the slopes to the extent possible, staff recommended using a 10-foot setback to the right-of-way along Florida Road and along Mets Lane. That does still end up being about 20 feet to the curb line for Florida Road. And then just one other point here on the landscape plan, the developer has included some, somewhat of a robust landscape buffer for the property to the north to try to increase privacy. These are evergreen trees that are going to be planted and provide year-round screening for both developments. Just a couple of renderings, what the units are likely to look like. So they are connected by the garages, and they have a nice deck space above the garage, which should be a good amenity for the future owners. Relatively modestly sized units, 11, 1200 square feet, two bedrooms, tandem garages. As for staff comments, I've touched on some of these already, but again, the modified setbacks, a 10-foot setback to the right-of-way, and then 20 feet to the northern property line. There was a dumpster location previously within a stormwater easement, so we corrected that. It's been moved to a central area of the property. There's a vehicle turnaround, which is necessary due to the gated end along Florida Road there. That is in a kind of a steep area. We haven't seen details on retention on that. So that's something we'll look at, I think, at the final plan. Pretty minor concern, really. The applicant will need to provide EV parking and EV-ready spaces in accordance with code. And then the sidewalk along Florida Road is going to need to be extended to the western property lines. I plan right now and shows it ending at that emergency Ugress Gate. As for public comment, again, I touched on this a little bit earlier, but there were seven written comments that were received in advance of the planning commission meeting. Nothing since then. Those concerns that came up were mostly about the rear setback, possible impacts to the Mountain Trace 1 units. There were also some questions on connectivity, the Mets Lane extension, as far as when that would occur, and also impacts to the existing intersection between Mets and County Road 250 and 251. I think as council probably knows, there's a CIP project over there right now. So that, in conjunction with the Mets Lane extension connecting to Florida Road, I think will address most of the connectivity and traffic issues that are impacting that intersection right now and ease the burden on it. There are a few comments on construction issues with the developer as far as Mountain Trace 1. With every development, we're going to go out on-site. Our inspectors will go out and make sure everything is built in accordance with what is proposed. With a private development like this, those improvements are typically maintained by an HOA after the fact. And that would be the case with this as well. As for review criteria, for a preliminary PD, must be consistent with and generally meet all the criteria for the conceptual development plan, and that includes alignment with city policies, alignment with the development trajectory for the area, needs to have adequate infrastructure, needs to protect natural resources. That's what they've done with citing their units away from the hill. And also just broadly tend towards efficiency for the units. And then, of course, the public improvements must meet the city's development standards. Our engineering staff has reviewed this extensively and found that to be the case with a few minor comments. As for the planning commission, they did have some comments on parking, on the efficiency questions, on some of those minor issues with the site plan. But broadly, they did find the proposal to be in compliance with the LUDC criteria for this stage of review. They did recommend approval with the conditions in the staff report, and then that additional condition of requiring EV parking spaces in accordance with the LUDC. And then also for the units to be constructed solar-ready, basically, which is something that the applicant has indicated he is willing to do. Just briefly on the strategic and cop plans, of course, this increases housing inventory within city limits. It does align with the development trajectory for the area. It will improve pedestrian connectivity for residential development along Mets Lane and broadly for the Mountain Trace community, those areas to the, to the north. As for fair share, the applicant has proposed to comply with our fair share ordinance requirements by paying the fee in lieu. It is a substantial fee of just shy of $580,000. We are talking about discussing some creative options to try to utilize these funds. But for council's perspectives, you know, they are complying with code by proposing to pay that fee. And we'll see where it goes from there at this point. As for findings and a final recommendation, the proposal does minimize impacts on Mountain Trace 1, fits into the community, also minimizes the impacts on the slopes to the maximum extent possible. It does align with code standards and city policy and provides some needed housing. The minor concerns that remain can be addressed at the final PD room. So the motion on screen is the same as what's in your packet. And at this point, can take any questions?
Actually, I'm going to open the hearing, and then we'll take questions. Is there anyone virtually who has raised their hand to speak to this project, proposed project?
No, Mayor, does not appear. Well, oh, sorry, someone just raised their hand. Here we go. Christina.
Hi, this is Christina Stromford. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My only concern is drainage, and I brought it up at the planning commission meeting as well. And I'm concerned because this is a steep slope, and I live in building H. And when they did construction, they kind of tore up the hill a little bit behind the building that is between my building and the new proposed development. And it just not, it's not fixed, so it is eroding. That kind of drainage, it also comes from behind. That kind of drainage, it also comes from behind building G down into my area. And I just want to make sure that they do a better job maybe with this because these are steep slopes. And the other question I have is the drainage that goes into the two culverts that are in Mountain Trace one. If that receptacle area is built to withstand whatever water or drain off, you know, drain off would come down into that area. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone else raised their hand to speak as part of the public hearing?
No mayor, no one else is.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and open it for questions from council.
Dan, do you want to respond to the public comment or do you have any information about that?
Sure, yeah. I don't have details. At this point in time, I do know that our engineering staff has reviewed drainage extensively for both Mountain Trace one and they're aware of the infrastructure that currently exists in there. I believe what exists is quite large, actually, should be adequate. It's, it's pretty substantial drainage. What is proposed with this development in particular, hasn't been reviewed in great detail. A lot of times that will come through with a drainage report with the final development plan and will be reviewed in great detail at that stage and will need to comply with our stormwater standards. So that's sort of the answer in a nutshell.
Did you have any other questions? Any other questions from council?
Yeah, sure.
No, please.
Do I understand correct that this development, so first of all, thank you for the presentation. I received some, I read the comments, I think we all heard valid, but it seems that either we can't do much about it or it is being addressed. Things that were mentioned. The sidewalk, the sidewalk, is that going to match the same style you have on Florida South of Red? Is that going to be matching and over time continuing?
Yeah, so it's a good question. If, maybe if I reshare and go back to the image, just to kind of give you the context there. The sidewalk with a, with a development project, we can require improvements to the adjacent right of way. So if you look at the aerial, let's see if I can get it to come up again. And of course, it's not going to show the sidewalks all the way down. Well, I guess maybe you can see them all the way down here. But obviously here's the project. So there will be sidewalks along Mets and then along Florida. And then this is an older subdivision that has never actually developed. So there are no sidewalks there. And then I believe there are sidewalks down here adjacent to the gas station. So at this point, there won't be a sidewalk connection for this development, just because we can't reasonably require the developer to build sidewalk along property that is not his frontage. But it gets us closer to that point.
Every little step that helps, I think so. And that's the same width of sidewalk as you have on the rest of.
It's an, it's an eight foot sidewalk. I don't know the actual width down here. I believe it's the same though.
And the next thing I had is, I'm sure the developer or architect is online or.
They should be. I was told they'd be participating virtually.
I'll ask him a question if you can get them online. So the fair share ordinance option to pay the fee you of $580,000 is quite significant. So this is on top of all the other fees. Water tap fees, burn fees, as well as what this development includes on infrastructure improvements on Mets Lane. And for you to go to the sidewalk. So it makes one wonder if we as a city are doing the right thing to make development easier and at a lower cost. The fee in lieu of $580,000 increases the cost for each unit by $25,000. All those fees, the fee you as well as permanent fee, staff fee, et cetera, and all work they're doing on the streets will be reflected in their houses, in the housing. So to speak of avoidability, one could argue that we're doing the opposite. In addition, since we are really not making progress in addressing the housing shortage in 2022, 2021, the certificate of occupancy issued within the city was 96. And that was the, the, one of the lowest. Now, year to date, till the beginning of September, it was 50, so even less. Would it be, maybe we should consider way being part of the fair share ordinance requirements and fees if the construction is completed within a certain timeframe. And discuss, for example, a voluntary transfer fee, which would be a long term structural source income. And I want to ask the property developer as well as the architect, if in their opinion, that would be something that they in general would be open for, just pulse.
Sounds more like a question for the developer. I can say from staff's perspective.
I'm going to ask the host, has the developer raised their hand?
Not, okay, here we go. Now they have. I will allow them to talk. Dennis Shaw.
So please introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you. This is Dennis Shaw, Shaw LTD, the developer. I was having a hard time hearing council member speak, but I caught enough of it to understand what he's saying and, and I saying, he's absolutely right. It's having the opposite effect on housing affordability. I know Dan shaking his head yes, but basically you're adding a tax to all the other homeowners of 25,000. So it's having the opposite effect on housing prices. In fact, we're going to advertise a tax on these of $25,000 for affordable because it's getting so unpopular, the cost of these houses are rising so great that we, we sort of have to get a little relief valve to show them that the part of the cost is the attainable housing. So in my experience, the thing, the best thing to do for affordable housing is make more of it and, and not taxing everybody to buy a house. So.
So it's. I just wanted to be clear, when you say attainable housing, what are you planning on selling these units for?
Well, we don't know because we what inflation's doing and cost of construction. So that'll, that'll, that'll happen as we get closer to building the units. It's happening so fast that we don't know. We don't know what, what's going to happen. Lumber's down.
In the long run, you need to know that, but what I was wondering, you have to have done a pro forma to know whether or not you can even do this. What were you estimating to sell the units for when you did your, your plan?
Probably in the like I said, it's a moving target, but probably probably in the 650 to 700 range.
Thank you. So they weren't actually attainable in our attainable range really at that point. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to make real clear when we, oh, my view is that if we open this up, any counselor, we can, can interject and provide questions. So are there any other questions from any other counselors of Mr. Berg on this particular issue? That was raised.
How can you interject? I asked, I wanted to ask a question to Mr. Shaw.
You can ask it now.
And I get interjected. It doesn't matter. And Mr. Shaw, I, because you could not very well hear me, I'm going to just repeat what I was trying to get from you. I was saying that the, the, we're not doing much to add housing and we increase, we make it more complex. We have more demands on construction, street sidewalks. Plus we throw in a lot of fees. And then the result, as we can see on the track record for the past years, is very limited housing being added to our housing stock. So I was wondering, and this is not for this project, I don't have that authority, but I just wondered, wondered if you as a property developer and involved in this business, would it be beneficial, would be open to, to commit, for example, adding a certain amount of housing and getting in return, no fee on the fair share ordinance, the fee in lieu, but a transfer fee if you voluntarily would approve to that. Is that something that you would be open to even on this or future opportunities?
Explain a little bit about the transfer fee and I'm, I'm not sure I follow.
If I may, I want to make certain that we're not going into policy discussions here. I think the question that was raised originally by Counselor Bosman's was about the impact of this fee on your development. So I want to make certain we're not going into philosophy, policy discussion, which can come at an appropriately scheduled time. The question is about particularly the arrangements of this policy. So I'm, I'm looking to the city attorney to make certain we're not shifting outside of a appropriate discussion.
Well, the, the question before council is approval of this development proposal, sorry. So I think it would be hypothetical. I'm not aware of anything in the fair share ordinance that would allow council a unilateral wave at fee. So I mean, I, I agree with you that a policy decision, it may be an appropriate time to bring that up, but this, the focus of this is approval or nonapproval of this particular development.
So I'll just redraw my question. It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And hopefully I'll reach out to you at a certain point personally.
Thank you.
Other questions related to this project?
On the fair share, as I know, as I know, we talk about this every time and I'm sure to bring it up every time. I don't think our fair share program is working the way we'd like it to, and we all know that. And the longer that we hold off evaluating that and making it a more effective and more efficient program, the, the more these kind of conversations occur and the more impact it has. You mentioned something in the report and I don't remember exactly what it was you said, but you're working with creative ways with the fair share to create housing. Could you expand upon that a little bit more?
Yeah, without going into too much detail because of course it's hypothetical to an extent at this stage, but staff on the planning side and of course, working with Eva Hansen, Housing Innovation Manager. We've explored and talked about options and whether or not there may be ways to take a fee, certainly a fee of this amount and potentially reinvested in a project in exchange for units that could be deed restricted. Maybe not at the range that the fair share manual prescribes in terms of the 80 to 125%. And again, somewhat hypothetical, but those are sort of the ideas and the conversations that we're, we're having right now. We've, we have had some pretty candid conversations with the developer at this point and you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes. We're up, we're optimistic. But at this point, in terms of how this proposal aligns with code, the fee is what we have.
Right. And but you, you are having discussions with the actual developer of this property about the fair share and how that might change things a little bit.
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. That's what, that was what I was wondering about. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Can you put up the recommendation, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the Milton property preliminary plan development with the findings and conditions as outlined in the August 22nd Planning Commission Staff Report and Meeting Minutes.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I just want to thank staff for the creativity and we, I know it's not perfect and I know we've talked about the fair shore ordinance and I know like we're working to get there, but I feel like if you do have a developer like we saw with the new townhomes down on like 32nd. If you do have a developer that wants to partner with us, we're willing to be creative and take those steps to get those houses built onsite. You can't force everyone to develop properties the way we want and nor will we ever be able to. I don't care how good our fair shore ordinance is. So having staff like you and Scott and Eva onboard to take whatever money we can, that $579,000 to create those homes that we need in our community and get these 23, you know, new residential townhome units, whether it's 600, $700,000. It's going to help. Like we need those homes too, in addition to, you know, workforce housing and attainable housing. So thank you for being so creative and working so hard. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, counselor.
Let's have this vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
And Mayor Knoford?
Yes. Now we move to council reports and actions and we have updates on liaison reports. Would anyone like to go first with some of the reports?
Mine aren't listed here because I didn't actually have a meeting, but there's a couple of fun things going on with my liaison roles. The airport finished, as we all know, the rehab ahead of schedule by a few hours even. And the team there of Tony and oh my gosh, I'm totally blanked. What's Tony and his crew was amazing in working and getting it done. So that was great. And then for the CEC or yes, the new celestial sailor sculpture was installed at the 32nd Street pedestrian bridge. So go by and take a look at it. It's beautiful. Jeff Weiss was the sculptor and it depicts an interstellar traveler astride their starship canoe. So and that was made possible with Rogers Tax Arts and Culture Funding. So there you go.
Counselor Bosman's, any update?
Have you, has there been a Southwest cog meeting lately? Cause we haven't heard what's going on with them.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Any update on Parks and Rec or anything?
Well, so Natural Lands Board, you attended.
Yep.
And I just became the liaison to the Parks and Rec Board and their meeting was during my previously scheduled out of town time. So I did not attend. And, but I do have an RHA update and so the board interviewed two candidates for their executive director position and chose not to move either one of them on in the process. And as such, we had a discussion about, do we want to reopen it for more, another interim ED position or a full or a permanent ED position? Or do we want to shift the focus of the RHA? And the board decided that we are not going to pursue the interim or full-time ED position at this point in time, that we will switch our direction to becoming more of a funding organization because we have different abilities to create funding than, than say a nonprofit does. So we can support nonprofits and get as much money, you know, as we can. So municipalities can do this, nonprofits can do this, the RHA can do this. As well as being a network connection between different projects and different builders and different municipalities and different funding arrangements. So trying to be a resource as well as helping to fund projects. So we have some future direction that we're, we're going and we'll see how that turns out. And then we'll be making some decisions here in the very near future, like how we'll do that and what that'll look like. So the the market for housing, whether it be EDs or our wonderful people that we have in our housing division is really, really tight. And we were offering a salary that many thought was like a little too high. And yet we didn't get really qualified people for it. So we've decided that that's a message and we need to find another way to utilize our capabilities.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I attended the infrastructure advisory board meeting yesterday and just a couple of things. We have three proposals that came in for the rate study and there is a working group evaluating that, that includes a member of the IAB. And so they're, they're looking at it and going through the purchasing process and we'll have that coming up to us soon. We talked about the a little bit about the Lake Night Horse RFP plan and stakeholder agreement and what that will be involved in. Just the conveying the real importance of reaching out to so many different groups that have an investment in that. We also talked a little bit about the fund balances. We talked about that on a regular basis, both particularly the water and the sewer, but also the 2019. We have requested some additional information from Devon and from the, from Cynthia regarding those fund balances that will help thinking. those fund balances that will help thinking about projections that'll be coming out. Looking at anything else? One of the other issues we we talked about, they they asked about was a bit of the city's timing and thinking about the Advisory Board whole maybe potential rethinking of that and what is our timeframe? I didn't have one, but I I went back to how Counselor Baxter, how you and I started this process as a working group back in November and December of 2019. And so it has been three years in the process of thinking through this. We talked about how the importance of getting community feedback, but also being you an input, but being judicious with volunteer and staff time. So that that was part of it. On the Natural Lands Board, we had an Amy provided a very thorough update on fire mitigation efforts and some wonderful funding opportunities. Again, I always remind everyone that grants are gravy, so making certain that we appropriately fund protecting our environment and preventing, doing what we can to mitigate the risk of fire. We talked a little bit about some of the efforts the staff are doing to clear the brush around the animus trail and the river, so it you can see more. And that's in in relation to the situation with unhoused people being spending the night there. So that is a was a concern that was raised in that meeting. And then we also, as you can imagine, talked about the city's previous meeting with and the recommendation around e-bikes and a real discussion of what does human powered entail? And so we looked to staff to come back with that. The last thing I also wanted to mention is we did have a URA meeting and I'm looking to Scott because I don't have my full notes here with me, but we were presented with two projects to consider funding that would do improvements in the the downtown renewal area. And after some discussion on the amount to be awarded, both of those projects were awarded. They are on Second Avenue and also on 12th Avenue, I believe, right next to each other. And they'll address roofing and exterior appearance. But one thing that did come up was the sidewalk discussion and it's interesting. So I tied that to the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting because we had been discussing sidewalks and there had been no bids. And one of I had suggested, well, why don't you apply for the sidewalk? And then I learned my error that it's only available to residents. And so one of the discussions with the IAB was again, the need to come back with some recommendations on the 50/50 or should that percentage change? And should we make it available to the private sector as well? Because sidewalks are sidewalks and they need to be improved. So again, it's interesting how the URA intersects again with other working groups and other boards. So those were my main reports. I also want to say that I was out riding my bike on the Animus River Trail and I saw Jeff Weiss working on the installation of the exhibit and I think it's wonderful. So I want to encourage folks to while the weather's still good, get out, go for a walk, go for a ride and check out the art along the Animus River Trail.
One more thing, I forgot. The Economic Alliance Summit is tomorrow at the Sky Ute Casino in Ignacio. It's all day. The tickets are sold out, so if you don't have one, I'm sorry, but it should be very, very exciting and I'm planning on doing a half-day attendance.
I'm planning on going too. Not sure if other councils are going, but that would create a conflict, I guess.
Well, no, because we're not, we're not having, well, it's only two of us, first of all, but also we're not having a meeting. We're allowed to go to, which is basically what this is. So yeah, that's great. Well, I'll see you there.
On that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.